9:5.
No, correct.
May you do. We'll start tonight off with a public hearing advertised. And I'd like to open that public hearing with regards to the community development block grant application of Graywell Inc. And at this time, I'd like Tammy to read the notice of public hearing.
Notice of public hearing, community development block grant application. Public notice is given that the Green County Legislature will hold a public hearing on March 20th at 6:25 PM in the county legislature boardroom at 411 Street, Catskill, New York to obtain the use of citizens, public agencies, and other interested parties on the housing and community development needs of the county and eligible community development block grant CDVG activities, and to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the county's proposal to submit a community development block grant application to the New York State Office of Community Renewal for funding to the Graywell Inc. project in the town of Cooksville. A summary of the CDVG program will be presented in the public hearing as well as details regarding the proposed project. The hearing facility is handicapped accessible. The county encourages public comment and participation in the identification of needs and in the preparation of the grant application. Written comments are invited and can be submitted by email to jehannes@greencountyny.gov using the subject line "Public Hearing, Graywell Inc." Written comments must be submitted no later than four o'clock in the morning before 9:00 AM.
Okay, Tammy. Purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments from the public with regard to the community development block grant application of Graywell Inc. And I would just ask that if you wish to speak, that you state your name for the record. And with that, we'll begin this hearing. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to the community development block grant application of Graywell Inc.? Anybody? You want any written comments to that? We did not receive any written comments.
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to once again state that the business owners of this project, I've known them, both families, and they're hardworking. But at some point, the state money coming through is a grant, it's not a loan, that doesn't have to get paid back. At some point, these things gotta change. And I wish them well with it. And I know their support for it, but at some point, we have to change this notion that businesses can just get this grant money and not have to have any way of paying or requirement to pay back, especially if they sell the place. Because we've seen facilities up for sale in Green County here in Catskill that have received significant funds from taxpayers and that have sold. And taxpayers are not recouped any of that money. So that's all I pretty much wanted to say. Thank you.
Yeah, I understand what Mike's saying, but in all due respect, if the money's gonna come into it anywhere, I wanna see it come into Green County. And if you resell a business, is it gonna be worth more after all the updates and the money came in, which is gonna benefit the community and everything? So I really don't see this as a lose-lose. And anytime we can get money into our community to help the people who live here, I'm behind it.
Mr. Chairman, these two families put this business together. They're very successful. They're two different businesses, different people with different business. They're very successful. Part of them concerned, they're not gonna loot, they're not gonna be for sale or anything else. They're gonna be really, they're going gun haul and nothing's gonna stop us to get that thing off. I'll tell you right now. They're good people, honest people.
Yeah, building rules, great.
So, yes, I understand what Mike's saying, I hear what he's saying. We've had many grants in the past for businesses that a couple went out. I understand where Mike's coming from. But having said that, I went over it a couple of times and looked at the building that they redid. It's gorgeous. You know, I knew what the building looked like beforehand and was a busy, busy place at that time. But they really made it look really nice. And I foresee a great business coming in there and very successful. So I'd say thank you, and I think that people of Green County are gonna benefit from it.
I would just like to add, I don't think Mike was slighting the
No, he wasn't.
the two people who are doing this, the two families at all. I do understand exactly what Mike is saying, that eventually the state has to stop doing this because eventually, you know, it's gonna, we're gonna run out of money. So I totally understand what Mike is saying.
Now it's development funds.
And if anybody is, I mean, if they're going to give the money, absolutely, we want it to come into Green County, but I do understand what Mike's saying.
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate a few points to ease some concerns about the source of the money and what would happen in the sale of the building or the business. The source of the money does come federally, it trickles through the state. A few years ago, they decided to grant out their CDVG program funds in form of grants. We've seen them being utilized in Green County primarily, most recently under my grant prize applications. So we've since totally exhausted the funds, and those are creating jobs. This particular application is, there is a job component, job creation component required. With the amount that they're asking, they're required to create approximately 7.2 full-time equivalent positions. And they are projecting double that, so they're going above and beyond just the requirement of the state policy to create jobs. Secondly, of course, there's always concern of what we call clawbacks. When we build grant agreements, once the county can stretch the money, we enter into an agreement with the applicant. The applicant, then, like any loan agreement or any grant agreement that you're deciding, you're held to a specific standard or at risk of default. One of those components of default that we incorporate into that grant agreement is the sale or closure of a business within a certain timeframe. So there are provisions that are built into these agreements to ensure that the risk of clawback is as low as it can possibly be. So we're not risking the neck of the county in the event that we have to answer for it to succeed.
Okay, so again, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to the community development block grant application of Graywell Inc.? Oh, once, once, three times? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for attending this public hearing. Presenting the regular meeting, we will be here very shortly. Thanks, guys. Stay here, take off, see you all. I'd like to call regular meeting number three for the year 2024 to order and ask everyone to rise for a moment of silent prayer.
Thank you. You're joining, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Attorney General, all legislators are present.
There is one proclamation on the agenda this evening. Green County Department of Human Services Global Volunteer Month. I have legislator Blumer along with Stephanie Booth, Lillian, Vicki, and Janet. And you have them all.
Anyone hear me? Okay. Green County Legislature proclamation, Green County Department of Human Services Global Volunteer Month. Whereas every April, Global Volunteer Month is time to recognize volunteers and people who actively support their communities. And whereas, the week of April 21st through April 27th, 2024, is recognized throughout the United States as National Volunteer Week, powered by points of light and as an opportunity to recognize the impact of volunteer service and the power of volunteers to tackle society's greatest challenges, to build stronger communities, and to be a force that transforms the world. Each year, we shine a light on people and causes that inspire us to serve, recognizing and thanking volunteers who lend their time, talent, and voice to make a difference in their communities. And whereas, National Volunteer Week was established in 1974 and has grown each year as people strive to lead lives that reflect their values. The expression of civic life, as evolves and doing good, comes in many forms, and we recognize and celebrate them all. And whereas, National Volunteer Week is part of Global Volunteer Month, a time to celebrate volunteers as well as inspire volunteerism around the globe. Volunteers are the heartbeat of strengthening community. People everywhere are called upon to take action because every act of service builds a stronger community. And whereas, the Green County Department of Human Services relies upon volunteers as AmeriCorps seniors provide and assist with vital services for the elderly residents of Green County. And whereas, these volunteers are crucial to the Department of Human Services, including home-delivered meals and transportation for medical appointments. And whereas, volunteerism empowers individuals to find their purpose, take their passion, and turn it into meaningful change by solving our most persistent problems and create stronger communities with a more just society. And whereas, it has long been a tradition for the counties' AmeriCorps seniors volunteers to perform work of a high quality and to brighten the lives of others while making Green County a better place in which to live by serving in community locations. And whereas, these county volunteers give of their energy, time, ability, and experience. Now therefore, we, the members of the Green County Legislature, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Green County Department of Human Services Global Volunteer Month. And further, we recognize and thank the many volunteers within Green County who lend their time, talent, and voice to meet the critical needs of our communities. With great pleasure, we honor all of our county volunteers and convey this sincere gratitude and appreciation of our citizens for the dedicated, selfless, and compassionate efforts of these volunteers. Dated March 20th, 2024, the Green County Legislature, signed by Patrick Linger, Chairman.
Here we go.
Mike, you're not gonna give directions on where they stand?
That'd be Harry.
Just to give you a short synopsis, I did send it out in your mail for you. We had 181 volunteers contributing a total of 11,681 hours, which according to the independent sector, has a value of $35.71 an hour for a total of $417,128.51, making Green County a better place for seniors to live. We had 123 homebound mail delivery volunteers who delivered 88,608 meals to 458 recipients. We had 24 homebound medical transportation volunteers who provided 1,339 rides to medical appointments for 101 clients. Forty-six of our clients who received meals were veterans. Eleven of our clients who received rides were veterans. And 16 of our RSVP volunteers who served last year were veterans. It's a great group of people to work with.
Just about as difficult of a job as the one that Ruth has of finding a wall.
It's continuous. Word of mouth is our best form of getting a new volunteer. Spread the word. New volunteers.
All right, if there's no objections or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting, I'll declare that approved. Can I get a motion in a second to dispense with committee reports?
Martinez.
Can I?
Correspondents, packages. And with that, and the resolution.
Resolution number 112-24, authorization of state claims. Authorized by Lieutenant Martinez, Second by Lieutenant Davis, and Leonard.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Resolution number 113-24, authorization of state claims. Authorized by Lieutenant Rivera, Second by Lieutenant Martinez.
You all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That's carry.
Resolution number 114-24, setting public hearing on Local Law introductory number one of 2024, a local law superseding Republic Officers' Law, Section 3, Subsection 1, as to the residency of certain public officers, assistant public defenders in Green County. Authorized by legislator handle, Second by legislator Davis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That's carry.
Resolution number 115-24, resolutions opposing Assembly Bill 80.6989 and Senate Bill S6786 entitled "An Act to amend the Alcohol Beverage Control Law in relation to establishing supermarket wine licenses." Authorized by legislator Martinez, Second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? Carry.
Resolution number 116-24, reaffirming and ratifying Green County Resolution Number 482-02, authorizing the purchase of 90 Allen Street, Town of Catskill, State of New York, and Lead Agency Determination that the purchase is an unlisted action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. Authorized by legislator Martinez, Second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Carry.
Resolution number 117-24, amending Resolution Number 279-11, adoption of Green County Amendment, authorized by Chairman Linder, Second by legislator Davis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That's carry.
Resolution number 118-24, authorizing agreement with Green County EMS Council, Inc., for aid training, 2024. Authorized by legislator Blumer, Second by Chairman Linder.
Second.
Lennon.
Lennon. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Carry.
Resolution number 119-24, affirmatively furthering fair housing in Green County Community Development Block Grant Program. Authorized by legislator handle, Second by legislator Tru.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Oppose.
No opposition. That's carry. Yes.
Resolution number 120-24, authorizing advertisement for bits propane service. Authorized by legislator Martinez, Second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Carry.
Resolution number 121-24, authorizing advertisement for bits purchase on materials. Authorized by legislator Lewis, Second by Chairman Linder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That's carry.
Resolution number 122-24, authorizing the Highway Department to enter into an agreement with Craig Manning LLP for the replacement of the county Route 3 over West Sutherland Brownell Creek, CIN 03-00-285-HAL, Town of Powkup, Pin 1762.66. Authorized by legislator Lewis, Second by Chairman Linder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Carry.
Resolution number 123-24, authorizing purchase of one new compact track holder and cleaner attachment. Authorized by legislator Lewis, Second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Carry.
Resolution number 124-24, authorizing purchase of one new hydraulic end goal. Authorized by legislator Lennon, Second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That's carry.
Resolution number 125-24, authorizing purchase of two new half-ton four-wheel-drive pickups through the New York State Office of General Services. Authorized by legislator Martinez, Second by legislator Lennon.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That's carry.
Resolution number 126-24, authorizing extension of contract for the operation of the Household Hazard Police Project. Authorized by legislator Lewis, Second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That's carry.
Resolution number 127-24, establishing capital project number 147, tactical transfer station residential drop-off. Authorized by Chairman Linder, Second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or oppose? Carry.
Resolution number 128-24, awarding electrical contractor for tactical transfer station residential drop-off infrastructure project. Authorized by legislator Lennon, Second by legislator Rivera.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Carry.
Resolution number 129-24, awarding general contractor for tactical transfer station residential drop-off infrastructure project. Authorized by legislator Tru, Second by legislator Lewis.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That's carry.
Resolution number 130-24, authorizing agreement with Green County Department of Human Services Aging and Heartstone Care LLC. Authorized by legislator Tru, Second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Carry.
Resolution number 131-24, authorizing agreement with Green County Mental Health and Coordinated Care Services. Authorized by legislator Davis, Second by legislator Lennon.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That's carry.
Resolution number 132-24, increase administrative fee Green County Public Health Department. Authorized by legislator Davis, Second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Carry.
Resolution number 133-24, approving related service provider contract for special education program. Authorized by legislator Rivera, Second by legislator Lennon.
Ready? Legend? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Resolution number 134-24, authorizing contract with County Deputy Director Green County Public Health Department. Authorized by legislator Rivera, Second by legislator Lennon.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That's carry.
Resolution number 135-24, authorizing out-of-state travel Green County Economic Development Tourism and Planning. Kirk Gosh, Senior Tourism and Parks Manager. Authorized by legislator Lennon, Second by legislator Rivera.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Carry.
Resolution number 136-24, authorizing out-of-state travel Green County SRO Deputy Colby Rogers, Wyndham Castle Jewett School. Authorized by legislator handle, Second by legislator Martinez.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Carry.
Resolution number 137-24, amending Resolution Number 90-24, appointing members to the Green County Fire Advisory Team. Authorized by legislator Lennon, Second by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Carry.
Resolution number 138-24, reappointing Commissioner of Social Services. Authorized by legislator Blumer, Second by legislators Lennon, Rivera, Overbaugh, Tru, and Chairman Linder.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Oppose.
Carry.
Resolution number 139-24, budget amendment, capital project number 123, Green County Justice Center. Authorized by legislator Davis, Second by legislator Blumer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Oppose.
Rivera, Lewis?
And Jay.
Three? Carry.
Resolution number 140-24, budget amendment and authorizing purchase of two new 2024 court cases. Authorized by legislator Davis, Second by legislator Lewis.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That's carry.
Resolution number 141-24, budget amendment and authorizing purchase of fuel management system. Authorized by legislator Lennon, Second by legislator Martinez.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Carry.
Resolution number 142-24, budget amendment and authorizing purchase of one new single-axle two-wheel-drive cabin chassis including snow and ice control equipment. Authorized by legislator Lewis, Second by Chairman Linder.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That's carry.
Resolution number 143-24, budget amendment and authorizing purchase of three single-axle four-wheel-drive cabin chassis including snow and ice control equipment. Authorized by legislator Lennon, Second by Chairman Linder.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Carry.
Resolution number 144-24, budget amendment, insurance recovery, Green County Highway. Authorized by legislator Martinez, Second by legislator Lewis and Rivera.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Carry.
Resolution number 145-24, budget amendment, insurance recovery, salary raise. Authorized by legislator Lewis, Second by legislator Rivera.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Carry.
Resolution number 146-24, correct and assessment role of Town of Catskill Art Management Group Tax Map ID number 156.17-2-4. Authorized by legislator Rivera, Second by legislator Overbaugh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Carry.
Resolution number 147-24, correct and assessment role of Town of Catskill Born, Speak, Kill, Marry, Tax Map ID number 156.06-1-9. Authorized by legislator Rivera, Second by legislator Overbaugh.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That's carry.
Mr. Chairman, you should hand a companion resolution filed tonight along with the public hearing resolution authorizing the submission of the Graywell project to the state. That resolution would have authorized the submission by the legislature and the chairman to sign the application. We don't want to hold up their application and the timing of the approval with the state. So if we could have asked the legislature to move that resolution tonight, add it to the agenda, we would draft it up, circulate it tomorrow. But it's important for the applicant that it get into that cycle of approval with the state.
Do you have a dollar amount on that? It's a dollar amount or?
It would have been in the resolution and the description that went through the Economic Development Committee authorizing the submission of the application. In that resolution, it had the dollar amount that we would be applying for. And I believe it was 200?
It's just under, it's $188,856.
Less.
I see you need a resolution to submit that application to the state.
Correct.
I don't, I just have all the time. Resolution number 148-24, authorizing submission of application for Graywell.
Application for Graywell.
Resolution number 148-24, authorizing community development block grant application for Graywell Inc. project. I get a motion?
I'll get a motion.
Second?
Like?
Linger, like?
And can I get a second?
Overbought.
Overbought.
You know what month that resolution was on?
It should have been this one.
This one?
It'd be next month.
It was, it would have been the setting up the public hearing for tonight's public hearing for submission of this application. If it was.
I had the economic development.
Well, it had to go through committee to set up a public hearing and. It would have come out of Economic Development Committee and James gave the, you know, the bones of the application as what we were doing.
We may have set that. Your February last.
It went through, it went through Economic Development. Yes, number two. Was authorizing public hearing for Gray Willow Incorporated C D B economic development project.
Yeah.
Resolution number two.
And that was for?
A dollar amount.
And that was for one hundred and eighty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Eighty-six.
For that's.
Eight fifty-six?
Eight fifty-six.
Eight fifty-six.
One eight 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 five six.
Right, that was not.
Eight eight five six. So was there a thing from the table you just read? One hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollar amount to the resolution? For that application, so we have a motion, we have a second.
I have, like, I'm going to make a motion and I have all the last second.
You all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Oppose.
Oppose. Mike and Matt? That's carry.
Thank you, sorry for the snap move.
Any other?
The Chamber of Commerce is holding the Best in Green County Friday evening in Cooksake.
Our spot.
It's at the Wire. And we are giving out certificates to the award winners. Trying to develop a relationship with Chamber of Commerce. What time?
Five thirty. The other unfinished. Well, no, Patty, that's two.
Frank Aragona, affectionately known as Sinister A, passed the Ray Allen Day, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Grab his eighty-five years, his visionary leadership and unwavering dedication have left an indelible mark on all heads of young. Born and raised in Brooklyn, Frank's journey was defined by a commitment to service. After earning a degree in engineering at the U S Naval Academy, he served as the greatest helicopter pilot in the U of D, from recognition in the National Naval Aviation Museum for his heroism. In nineteen sixty-one, he married his beloved wife Claire, and the bond remained unbreakable throughout their life. Following his military service, Frank embarked on a new chapter founded in Country Place Resort and later Zune Flum Water Farm in the scene of Cassino. His innovative spirit and passion for creating unforgettable experiences were evident in every aspect of his endeavors. Today, his business life is seen as a sign of the dedication of his children and friends. Family was always at the forefront of Frank's life. They survive by his cherished wife Claire, their four children, ten grandchildren, and five great grandchildren, all whom he held dear with heart. As we mourn the loss of a visionary leader, we also celebrate the life well-lived and legacy that will endure for generations to come. Though Frank may no longer be the Best in Person, his spirit of friend will inspire us, reminding us of the extraordinary man whose dreams continue to shape our reality. He certainly brought a lot to each sperm and will be very nice. Next one. A little more difficult for me. Monfred Robert Handel, eighty-five, Re Sterm, passed away on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, surrounded by his family. Bob was born to Maria Adolf Handel on April fourteenth, nineteen thirty-eight, in Ray Allen, Georgia. Bob came to America in nineteen fifty-eight, sending only a five dollars in his pocket. At only nineteen, he began working in Harlem as a master tooling dyemaker, working long hours between one day building a business of his own. He eventually found himself on weekend trips to the Catskills, where he met the woman who had promised to be his wife, Ginger, at Blackhead Mountain Lodge. In nineteen fifty-eight, they were married and began a lifetime of building together. They had their first child and decided to start a horse farm in Durham, which is Tango Wood Ranch. Over the years, the family ran Tango Wood Ranch, delighting Eastern vacations with trail rides filled with fantastic parades, taking young adults under their wings for the summer to learn about horsemanship and also building and honing their individual interests. As they got older, Roy was interested in mechanics, so they built Supersonic Speedway, a small amusement park on November four forty-five. Eventually, the family would buy Mullins Mountain Springs Hotel, which would become the Black Forest Resort. Bob was an active member of the Eastern community since arriving here over fifty years ago. He helped to build the Greenwich Cultural Center, volunteered at the Eastern Vacation Line Association, and court his heart, which knew residences alongside his family. In a deep love for his community, he spent his lifetime working to build something greater than it. Bob had a can-do personality, and always made him think, put his mind to something, it could be accomplished. He was a crafty and responsible man who lived a lifetime to himself with farms, ride horses, construct buildings, crafting glass, hunt, and count some of his skills in art. While his ambitions were relentless, he was always humble in time, never forgetting those who helped make it all possible. While Bob had an intense commitment to hard work, he was his family, he was the practice of. And actually, he was also very proud and would always say that he was more American than anybody here because he chose to be an American and he felt that way, so it gets done.
The entire legislature was to second that. Second.
Second.
Second. Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, then I just want to remind anybody that has a Steenberg grant in this month and checks will be available on Friday at the end. I just have the legislature just hang out for a minute, see if something I will bring up after. That's all for the current grant.